We're live. Good evening. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I'd like to announce that the month of February is African Heritage Month, and the town of Oxford, and Oxford County Council recognizes. If you're interested in information on this, you can check on our website. First up, we have a committee of the whole. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Looking to a motion for approval of the agenda.
Second.
I'm going to call approved then. We're going to change the agenda just a bit. First up, we're going to call on Fire Chief Bruce Rushton and Deputy Chief Cawthorne to make the fire department presentation. Then we'll be moving on to other presentations. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. So the fire department responded to six emergency calls in January. Mutually called for structured fire, mutually called for potential structured fire, and four motor vehicle accidents. I want to share a little bit about our training over the last month. Not just training, but attendance overall. Firefighters have put in more than 230 hours in the month of January alone. So that's a significant number of hours. Last month, I reported that the department responded to 89 calls in 2022. We actually responded to 99, my full report. Thirty-seven percent of those calls were within town limits. Twenty-seven, sorry, 29% of the mutually called to assist other departments, 31% of remote vehicle accidents. Very pleased to share with you folks tonight that the department has ordered a heavy-duty commercial clothes washer that will be installed at the fire station. This will be for cleaning our bunker gear. And this is only made possible through the Nova Scotia firefighter 50/50 drop. We have also received notice and assistance through the province of Nova Scotia for the purchase of a new generator that will be installed, purchased and installed at the fire stations. Some repairs to the fire trucks. We have a new alternator installed on truck one and two NVIs completed and a new battery for one truck, $2,754. I'd like to extend an invitation to any council members that would like to drop by the fire station on training night, the second Thursday of every month. If you're more than welcome to drop in. Thank you.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Anyone have any questions for either Fire Chief Bruce or Deputy Cawthorne? Go ahead.
I was just thinking, so with the new washer that comes in, will that take some of that expense away that we have for cleaning?
That's correct. So we can have the gear cleaned as soon as the structure fires over. It'll extend the life of the gear and also make it safer for firefighters and reduce the cost of sending it, outsourcing for cleaning. There's still maybe sent away twice a year for it to be inspected.
If I may, Chief, what, on training night, what time do you start training?
So our roll call is at 6:50. Training starts at 7:00 P.M. Thanks, man. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Okay, first up, we have from Cumberland County Public Libraries Denise Corey. She's going to give us a presentation. I'll turn the floor over to you, Denise.
Okay. I need to share my screen. There we go. Okay. So thank you so much for allowing me to come in and speak to you tonight. I really appreciate it. For those of you who don't know me, I am Denise Corey, the library director for the Cumberland Public Libraries. I've distributed to you our annual report for the year 2021, 2022, and of course, a pen everybody needs. And I'm here today because I know you know the value of your public library, but you also have to make a lot of decisions on other resources that serve your community needs. So I just want to let you know what the library does and remind you about how our funding operates and all that kind of thing. So you have it in the top of mind. So we're one of nine regional libraries in Nova Scotia. And for funding, we fall under the umbrella of the Department of Communities, Culture, Tourism and Heritage. Having said that though, we are not a government department. We're not provincial employees. We're not municipal employees. We are governed and employed by the regional library board. And councillor Black is the member who attends the library board meetings for the town of Oxford. So as I was mentioning before, before we were live, so I guess maybe I should make reference to it. There are seven locations that serve Cumberland County. We also have a world by mail service, and that's available to anybody who can't come into the library for any reason, whether it be that they are not physically able, whether it be that they don't have a vehicle, whether they're just not feeling comfortable being in a public space at this point. We will mail items to their house. And then we also have a headquarters location in Ambers from which we oversee all of the things that happen throughout the county. So the responsibilities. The municipal unit, so the town of Oxford, is responsible for providing the building or the space for the library, the furniture for that space, and maintenance. The maintenance includes things like cleaning and snow removal and, you know, just the things that need to be done to keep the building up. Now, having said that, the furniture you see in the picture, this is the new library space in the Oxford General Building. We did purchase that because at the time when we moved in there, I know that the municipality wasn't able to immediately purchase those items. So we took it upon ourselves to make sure that there would be shelling and that funding there. The library board is responsible for the staff, the equipment, the collections and our headquarters location. And collections, I will get to in a little bit later. This is everybody's favorite, funding, how we're funded. So we are funded, as I said, by the Department of Communities, Culture, Tourism and Heritage. They have a designated amount that is given to libraries and is divided among the nine regions based on a funding formula, which is mostly based on population. And then the municipal units are required to pay an amount that is in line with what their population is. It's a percentage of that formula. By library act, we are required to fundraise 3% of our operating budget each year. So in the 2021 fiscal year, our operating budget was just over $1 million. And you can see each amount that we got from the, from our funders. So the province of Nova Scotia is our biggest funder by far. And then what do we do with that money? Staffing. Staffing, as you know, is always our primary expense. This says we have 23 employees, but we actually now have 24 employees. So our FTE is still pretty close to that though, because we added a part-time person who works here in Oxford two days a week. So we have about 17 full-time equivalents, three professional librarians, two library technicians, a systems manager, an office manager, and then all of the people that work in our branches. And then our collections. So everybody thinks of books, and of course, we have books. We love books. That's our brand. But we also have DVDs, both movie and informational and TV show and all that kind of thing. We have radon meters, snowshoes, happy lights. That's one down in the corner. That's for seasonal affective disorder. So if you find it a little blue in the winter, you can get that. And that light is supposed to help even your mood out. And then we have electronic resources. And these resources are available to anybody. Library card is absolutely free. You just need to have an internet and internet access. We also provide free Wi-Fi and free internet access. So with these two services, Hoopla and Libby, you can get downloadable eBooks, audiobooks, magazines, graphic novels. Hoopla also has movies, TV shows, music. Both of them have, it's just, it's an amazing amount of stuff that's on there. And last year, over 24,000 items were checked out just on our online resources. We're also working very hard to provide more accessible items for our population. So we have copies of books in Braille. We have books on CD, like physical audiobooks on CD. We have large print. And then these two services, Sela and Nell's, are online services for people who have visual impairments. So we are subscribed to those as well. And then the fun thing, programs. So we run summer reading clubs for all ages from ages three to 103. We have craft programs. We do all kinds of fun things over March break. We have movie nights, author visits. But that's precluded on there being a space in which to provide it. So the picture that you see in the top right-hand corner is author Leslie Crew. She's a Nova Scotian author. She was in the Ambers Library in November. We had 96 people attend that. But there are not a lot of spaces in which we can do that. And we certainly cannot do that in Oxford. So these are our numbers from the 2021-2022 fiscal year. In that year, we loaned out one, over 102,000 items. To put that in proportion, there are about 30,000 people in the entirety of Cumberland County. And there was six weeks in there that we had to shut down for COVID restrictions. And the Oxford Library was closed part of that time because we were moving them into a new location. And the Red Hibbert Library was closed part of that time because we were moving them into a new location. We had over 43,000 people walk through our doors. We had over 46,000 people visit us online to get our downloadable resources. And we distributed over 138,000 COVID tests. We are still distributing COVID tests. I have literally just stopped counting. I just can't keep up. So we will continue to distribute those as long as the Department of Health and Wellness wants us to be that gateway to being able to access those tests for people. So according to the 2021 census, Cumberland County has just over 30,000 people. The town of Oxford has about 1,100 people. In the town of Oxford, there are 418 active registered users. So those are people with library cards. But they're not people that just own a library card and have it sitting in their wallet and have never done anything with it. That's a library card that they've used within the last three years. So that's about 35% of the town who have an active library card. But as you can see, we can make these numbers so much more. We opened the new Pubwash Library today. They are a smaller location and they do usually about, they're usually about our third highest circulation in the county, even though they are so much smaller. And why this, why libraries, these libraries make sense to you as a community? We offer a public space that is open, accessible for all. It is free. No one is required to pay. It doesn't matter what your background is. It's a community gathering place. People talk when they're in there. They get to know each other. It addresses the digital divide. Right now, we are seeing a lot of people who are unable to afford to have internet access at home because there has been such a huge jump in inflation. We have free and open Wi-Fi at all of our branches all of the time. We provide lifelong learning opportunities and recreational and cultural opportunities to the citizens of Cumberland County. And that's why it makes sense to the library users too. They come in, they know that they are getting things free. So they don't have to worry about, you know, I have four kids. How am I going to be able to afford to bring four kids to March break programs? Free internet, free wireless, a free and welcoming space where staff are friendly and knowledgeable. And I'd like to point this out. I know that not everybody thinks of the library as an active place. And I know that I'm feeding into the stereotype, but I'm a big book reader. So I wanted to mention, the average Canadian reads about 17 books a year. So, and this is from a study from 2020. So it's not at all. Right now, the average cost of a hardcover fiction book is about $37. So for a family of four, that's $2,200 a year that they save by coming in and using the library. And that's just the book aspect of it. That's no other aspect. That's not internet. That's not the educational opportunities. That's not, so. I'm a reader, so I have to leave with that. And your library card is free. And you'll see that these library cards are a little different than what we had before. We're now part of something called Same Page. That library card works in every public library in Nova Scotia outside Halifax. So you can borrow, and you can get a Halifax card too. So you can borrow in any public library in Nova Scotia. You can return in any public library in Nova Scotia. You can also borrow from the university libraries in Nova Scotia. And you can do it with that card. So I am happy to answer questions. As both Carolyn and Renton know, I can talk about libraries until your eyes roll back on your head.
Well, I have a question. I borrow eBooks through Libby. Now, do I count as a Cumberland County user? Is that through Cumberland County or is that through the Halifax Library? I'm not quite sure where I'm getting the books from.
Did you, it depends on which card you logged in with.
E-Lab, Fashion, Green and, it's green, mine are green and white on.
Then yeah, you're a Cumberland County user. You're one of our 24,000 borrowers last year from our online resources. And you should also try Hoopla because.
It didn't work. I tried to get in. I couldn't get in for some reason. But I did when we had the grand opening over there. You mentioned it. I tried to get in and I'll just keep you with my. It's easy.
You can make an appointment with our tech help person, Grace in Ambers. She can walk you through the whole thing. She's fantastic. Or Megan can probably walk you through it too. She's very tech savvy. And then you can access twice as many items.
I'll keep that in mind.
Hoopla also works on your smart TV because it streams movies, including my current favorite, Santa Jaws. It's absolutely as bad as you think it is.
Anyone have any other questions or comments?
I guess I just have a comment. Just if you had the opportunity to have a writer come or whatever, we always have our theater here that we can have anything like that there.
Yeah, and that's the thing. We just don't have the space, right?
Yeah.
Part of the reason that we hold things in the library is because we want people to associate that with the library. Although we have, I have been talking to Linda before. We had had things in the gazebo and in the summertime. It just, we do need some more space there. Because when we were in the other location, which leaked, so I'm not tining for those days. But there was a little more space. And I know that Megan has a really good connection with the youth in the community, especially since she also works at school. So they like to come and hang out and use the computer time and do crafts with her. And it's really hard to do that in that space.
I noted during COVID, that storybook that you could walk and read the story along, that was a huge hit. A lot of those are there, so I don't know.
We love Storywalk. And if you wanted to do a permanent installation, I know I had talked about doing something. There was, they were talking about putting one up near the school. And we had offered some suggestions for books that would work. But we're certainly happy to help put in a permanent Storywalk installation. They're really nice and they're fairly inexpensively built. And the one we had built in Ambers, we actually just can take the covers off so we can switch the stories out through the summer, which is nice.
Where's that located?
It was at the River Park. And then this past summer, we had them install it in the lawn at the, at the Ambers Library. But not every library has a lawn space like that that you can use. So, and there's one in the Pubwash Village too. That one is going to be left by the old library primarily for the people who are at the farmer's market. So it doesn't necessarily have to be next to the library, but we'll put our logo on it and tell the people it's not, it's three bucks.
Very good.
Anyone else have any other comments, questions? Well, we really appreciate you coming here to make the news. We've been very informative and want to thank you for taking time on your schedule to do this.
Thank you for letting me come in. I love to talk about the library anytime.
Okay.
And if you have any questions at any time, I'm happy to answer them for you. And now I'm going to pack up and sneak out of there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Had a lovely meeting.
We will. Okay, next on the agenda, we've got a couple of speakers from the Property Evaluation Services Corporation. Paul Beazley, Director of Assessment, and Rod Cromley, Assistant Director of Assistance. They're going to give us a presentation. And we'll turn the floor over to you, gentlemen.
Your worship, Mayor Henley and councillors, thank you for having us here this evening. And CAO Conny, thank you as well and staff. It's a pleasure to be here. You've introduced both myself and Rod, so I won't do that. Thank you very much for that. But Linda, did you want us to share our screen?
Yes, that'd be great. Thank you.
I'm going to let Rod drive the bus. He's better. He's more nimble on the keyboard than I am.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me. Hopefully you can, I hope you can hear us all right, your worship and councillors. So I may go ahead and share my screen here. Paul has a few slides. We're relatively conscious of time, so we'll try and move through it with some time for questions at the end as well. So bear with me. I'm not as, quite as zoom proficient here, but I will do my best. Share this one.
All right. Your worship, I'll lead this off here this evening, then I'm going to pass it over to Rod. And Rod, you want to put the agenda up there? So I'm going to talk a little bit about property assessment in Nova Scotia. Now, I'm going to burn through these first slides because I know that you want to see some numbers from the assessment role, which Rod's going to walk you through. Then we're going to talk about the CAPD assessment program, which I think is definitely on your mind and you may have some questions on. And then we'll talk a little bit about the inquiry and appeal period, which is pretty much over with now. But we're in the last days, so go ahead there, Rod. Now, now the presentation we had sent has a couple extra slides. I did cut out a couple in the, you know, in the sake of time so that we could go through fairly quickly. So Property Evaluation Services is created under the Property Evaluation Service Corporation Act in the early 2000s. And we're responsible for assessing all the property in Nova Scotia, some 640,000 properties across the province. And we are legislated under the Nova Scotia Assessment Act. We are independent. We are municipally funded by all 49 municipalities. And we're a not-for-profit corporation. We're governed by a board of directors. We have 10 right now, I believe. The deputy mayor of the town of Mahone Bay is our chair, Joe Feeny. And you will also, you may also know that the former CAO of the town of Oxford is also on our board, Rachel. We have approximately 130 employees working across the province. And they work from 62 communities around the province to cover all of Nova Scotia. What we do and what we don't do. PVSC, we deliver an assessment role to all 49 municipalities by the end of the year each year. As I mentioned, we delivered over 640,000 assessment notices this year, just a few weeks ago. And we administer the CAPD assessment program. We'll talk about that later. Plus, we administer the seasonal tourist business designation program on behalf of the province of Nova Scotia. What we don't do, which you have, you actually have the authority under the Municipal Government Act, but we do not. We do not have the authority to set tax rates. We do not collect taxes. We do not create tax policy. And we do not provide tax relief. We just do assessment. Now, when we assess, the assessment act requires that we assess property at market value. There's a couple of components to the definition in the Assessment Act. Market value is the amount which in the opinion of the assessor would be paid if it were sold on the date prescribed by the director. I'll talk about that date in a moment. Sold in the open market by a willing seller and a willing buyer. So their arms-length transactions, that's a market sale that we use in our analysis every year. Some 35,000, 40,000 sales every year. We'll look through for market sales that we review and analyze to define the trends and the market value changes from year to year. Things like tax sales, foreclosure sales, a lot of family sales are not open market. They're not arms-length. So most of those we don't use in our analysis. Also, the second component about, of the value that we put on the assessment role is the assessment shall be the assessment that reflects the state of the property as if it existed on the first day of December, immediately before the role is sent out. So a month and a half ago, we were adding value based on physical changes or physical attributes to the property right up to December 1st to make sure we had that value included as well on the roll. Things like building permits, inspections, that type of thing. Go ahead there, Rod. So I spoke about what was the prescribed, the date prescribed by the director. We're actually one year back in our market values. So, you know, simply said, the value on January, for the 2023 role, which you just received, the value on January 1st, 2022 is the actual market value date. And so it's based on sales that took place over the 2021 calendar year. Gets a little confusing talking 2021 calendar year and then January 1st, 2022. But it's for the 2023 role. So we're one year back and that's called the base date. The December 1st date where we add the characteristics and the physical state of the property, we get that as accurate as we can by December 1st, immediately prior to the role going out. That's called the state date. So all combined, that creates, is the components of the assessment role. We delivered the notices on January 9th, just three weeks ago. And then the appeal period starts and appeals must be submitted within 31 days of the actual date that the mail, the notice gets mailed out. So they had until February the 9th. So we're just three days away from the very last day that a person can appeal their property. And that appeal must be into us by midnight on February the 9th. So if anybody's asking you, tell them they better get on their horse and get it in if they wish to appeal. Go ahead, Rod.
I'll just put the whole thing there.
Yep, that's fine. So I wanted to talk a little bit about market value and trending in relation to the pandemic that we've gone through in the last couple of years. And our data scientists looked back at all our historic data. They went back to 2013 to look at historic data. And they did that when the pandemic started because they wanted to try to see if historic trends would continue through the pandemic. So they went back to 2013 and they, and they analyzed all the sales data across the province. And if you look under, at the bottom of that chart where it says 2014, you'll see the black up and down line and you'll see a red line that follows pretty closely to it. The black line is the actual historic values for sales. It goes up and down based on seasonality. And the red line that follows along it is actually what would be anticipated based on the historic trending. So as you can see, that goes through to 2018 and it's pretty much flat. And the anticipated pretty much mirrors. And the anticipated pretty much mirrors what the trending or the actual values, historic values would be. Starts to go up a little bit in 2019. And then the pandemic hits in 2020. That's where those black dots start to appear. So the anticipated, or what the historic trending, what, what we would have anticipated is the red line that continues up in a, in a gentle sloping manner up through 2020 and 2022. So the red line continues on. That's what would have been anticipated if the trends had continued. But COVID threw a wrench into that, as you all know. The black dots and the black line can diverge significantly from the red line in early or mid 2020. And then it's steeply upward all the way through 2021. And again, upward through the first half of 2022, and then it drops off sharply for the second half of 2022. So there was a big difference between what would have been anticipated based on historic trends and what actually happened. And realistically, most people thought that market values were going to go down when the pandemic hit. But they went just the, totally the opposite. They went up sharply. Now, those two orange lines, I call them the orange goalposts. Those two lines represent the calendar year 2021. The 12 months, the start of 2021 and the end of 2021 are between those two orange lines. And that sharp increase in the black line, that is the time period which the assessment for 2023 is based on. What's going to happen in 2022? We don't know. We know kind of where the sales prices went, up and down, but we haven't started our analysis yet. That will be for the 2024 roll year because we're back one year. So keep that in mind, that sharp upward uptick for, for when Rod gives you some numbers here in a second. Go ahead, Rod. So this, you know, keeping in mind the market at, in 2021, this is what you were reading about. This is what you would have seen, soaring material costs, home prices remain high. This is the busiest year ever. Market prices up 18%. So keeping that in mind, I'm going to pass it over to Rod now. He's going to take you through a few numbers and then lead, lead you through a discussion on the CAP.
Thank you, Paul. Thanks, everyone. Hopefully everyone can hear me okay. It's somewhat hard to say, hard to, I can't see anyone. I'll have the presentation up, so I'm sort of talking to a blank screen here, but I will, I will do my best. And on the next slide, I have a couple of numbers about the Oxford Assessment Role. And I'll try and relate them back to, to give a little bit of sort of meaning and perspective of where we are in relation to what the market did in 2021 as per Paul's, Paul's discussion there a few minutes ago. So town of Oxford, total assessed value is just over 110 million. Oxford is somewhat unique because of Oxford Frozen Foods and the size of that operation within the town. You have a fairly significant sized commercial assessment related, relative to your overall assessment. So $46.8 million roughly in commercial assessment and $63.66 million in residential assessment. So the residential assessment overall increased 23.6% from last year. In 2022, there was only an increase of 2.5%, and in 2021, an increase of 0.8%. So that's reflective of the market evidence that we see from Paul's graph a couple of slides ago, where we've seen, as many of you are aware, a fairly steep incline in the, you know, typical sales price of a residential property throughout the province of Nova Scotia. And we're required under Section 42 of the Assessment Act to build that in based on sales evidence from the 2021 assessment roll year. So when we look at the CAPD assessment program, I'll talk a little bit more about how CAPD works on the future slides. But what we wanted to include here is with CAP, your residential assessment is 57.4 million. What that means is that that's sort of your CAP impact. So many properties are capped within the town of Oxford, more this year than in previous years, due to the significant increase to market. What the 57 million means is that's the amount of, amount of sort of taxable dollars that are accessible to the municipality. So because of the CAP impact, some folks have a taxable assessment that is lower than their assessed value, and that 57 million contemplates that. The $46.8 million in commercial assessment, that's total commercial assessment. That's increased overall 7.1% for this year, which is consistent, very consistent with across the province. We saw a significantly flatter market on the commercial side this year as, as many commercial sectors sort of still deal with some of the lingering effects of the COVID-19 pandemic. There were a couple of sort of pearls in different sectors. The industrial sector was included. But things like, and multifamily, which typically would be classified as residential property. But those were also stronger based on the demand for housing as well. So commercials have 7.1%. That's significantly increased again in 2022. Commercial assessment was only 0.4%, and it was 6.5% previously in 2021. The commercial taxable lift is a little bit higher at 10.6% or 2.93 million increased over last year. So that contemplates the impact of properties which are exempt from taxation. So that, for instance, the school in Oxford is a significant sized assessment that is not generating a tax bill. So it's exempt under Section 5 of the Assessment Act. Other activity that changes our assessment role, so we looked at 23 building permits in the town of Oxford. So one of the reasons that an assessment can change is if there's physical changes to a property. So we, we annually go out typically in the fall and look at, we had about 16,000 building permits across the province in the year in 2022. And we're trying to determine if there's physical changes up to that December 1st state date, as Paul had mentioned. There were 42 transactions within the town of Oxford. This is a relatively significant number for, for a small town, as you folks are, indicating that there was a fairly active property market through the 2022 calendar year. And those are what we call sort of qualified transactions, so representative of the market. And those would be transactions that occurred in 2021. We looked at 14, we had 14 assessment appeals in Oxford in 2022. And looking forward to 2023, the current filed roll year, we do, we are anticipating a little bit of an uptick in our assessment appeal numbers based on the significant market increases applied across the province, over 20% province-wide on the residential assessment side. And so certainly we understand that when assessments change more year over year, we often see an uptick in appeal traffic as well, and we're prepared for that. So I'm going to talk a little bit more about the CAPD assessment program in detail, and hopefully we'll have a couple of moments if there's any questions from, from the, the mayor or the councillors on, on CAP. So CAP is provincial legislation. It's Section 45 of the Nova Scotia Assessment Act. Puts a cap on eligible property which limits taxable value increases. The cap rate is based on the Nova Scotia Consumer Price Index, or CPI, which is determined by Statistics Canada and provided to us by the Nova Scotia Provincial Government. So every November, we're provided with a CPI that has been calculated and we're required under Section 45 of the Act to apply that CPI to all of the CAPD assessments in the province. So CAP can sometimes be a little bit of a misleading terminology in the sense that CAPD assessments do increase. But assuming there are no physical changes to the property, the CAPD assessments increase only by the Consumer Price Index annually. So rather than moving with the market, based on market performance as of that base date, the cap, the cap rate is applied to all of the CAPD assessments. So in Nova Scotia, for the 2023 assessment role, the CPI was 7.7%. So all CAPD assessments in the province, if there are no other changes to the property, have increased by 7.7%. Account eligibility for CAP is determined by PVSC based on legislative criteria contained in Section 45. So what that means typically, just to run through it very briefly, you have to be a resident. Yet the property has to be 50% or more owned by a Nova Scotia resident. That's at least six months of the year. The property has to be a residential property, so it can't be, or a unimproved piece of vacant land. So it can't be classified as exempt from taxation. It can't be owned in the name of a business. It can't be a commercial property. It has to be three living units or less. So it's a fourplex, fiveplex, sixplex or larger. Even if it's residentially classified, it's not included in the CAPD assessment program. And CAP resets when a property transacts unless that transaction is directly to an immediate family member as defined in the CAPD legislation, which is typically father, or sorry, parent, grandparent, child, or sibling only. And that, that's specified both in Section 45 and in the regulations. So how the CAP looks for most folks, many of you folks are probably in possession of a 2023 property assessment notice. This is a snapshot from sort of the middle of the notice that explains the nuts and bolts, the numbers of your, of your taxable assessment and how it's calculated. So this is a relatively straightforward property, very likely a, a house, so residential property. There's only one line on the assessment. If you have different property tax classifications, you're going to see multiple lines on this assessment, and some of those lines may be eligible for the CAP, some may not. But for the sake of this example, the important thing to remember here is that the CAPD assessment will only display if it's less than your assessed value. And the CAPD logic is always taking the lower of the two numbers. So it is possible that if the Consumer Price Index in a given year exceeds as a percentage the amount that we have recommended the market change by in that area. So for instance, this year, if you had an area that was only increased by, say, 2%, and the CAP was 7.7, then there would be potential that some properties in that area may actually not have a CAPD assessment. It wouldn't mean necessarily that they weren't eligible, but the lower of the two values would be their assessed value, and their future cap would be calculated on that. In this example here, what you can see is that there is some advantage to the CAPD assessment. So we don't have enough information in this example to understand what the 372,300 in the third column is based on. But it would be based on a previous year's assessment. Based on the difference here, it's probably two or three years previous. So this is a property that maybe was acquired in 2017 or 2018 and, and became capped after that automatically based on the owners meeting the eligibility for the program. And then that 372 would be calculated based on the previous year's taxable assessment plus the Nova Scotia Consumer Price Index. In this case, the assessed value based on the increases we've applied in the area is higher than the CAPD assessment. So assessed value for 16,800, that's what we're saying that we think the property is worth based on the January 1st of 2022, the base date for 2023, or I think of it as the end of 2021. The CAPD assessment is based on a previous year's assessment brought forward. So they come from different places. The lower of the two is your taxable assessed value. So the third circle, last column on the right, $372,300. That's the amount that this property owner is going to pay taxes on or on, from a municipal perspective, the amount of taxable dollars available to apply the tax rate to. If there's multiple tax classes on the property, they would show up below, and it would all total in the 2023 total lines across the bottom so that the bottom right would be the total total if there was a commercial portion on this property as well. I'm going to talk very briefly about the appeal process, and hopefully we have a couple of moments for questions if there are any. So we are coming to the end of the Appeal Inquiry and Appeal Period, 31 days pursuant to Section 62 and 63 of the Nova Scotia Assessment Act. We mailed assessment notices January 9th of this year, and our appeal period ends February 9th, 2023. That is Thursday of this week. All of the instructions on how to appeal are contained on the back of this year's assessment notices. And what we need to receive from property owners is a signed copy of an appeal. But it is possible, the vast line share of appeals now come by email. It is possible, possible to fax or mail your appeal as well. The big thing right now, as Paul mentioned, if you're talking to folks, we need to receive those appeals by midnight on February 9th in order for them to be considered. So we are getting close to that deadline. There are three levels of appeal in the province of Nova Scotia. So we have the initial assessor review, where typically an assessor will reach out, determine the grounds of appeal with the property owner, discuss any of the relevant data and the sales data, and then make a decision on that basis. Decisions are mailed, and you're, you're either basically receiving what's called a confirmation notice indicating we're not recommending a change to the assessment, or a notice of amended assessment indicating that we are recommending a change and providing that new assessed value. If a property owner continues to be dissatisfied at that point, you have 14 days to continue to the next level of appeal, which is the Nova Scotia Assessment Appeal Tribunal. That's a more formalized process where the Appeal Tribunal is a third party, where a court chair will hear both sides from the property owner and from a representative for the Director of Assessment, typically one of our assessors. Each, each side sort of says their grounds or the reasons why they think the assessment should change or not change. And a written decision that is binding on us is issued by the Nova Scotia Assessment Appeal Tribunal. If a property owner continues to be dissatisfied at that level, it is possible to continue an appeal to the Nova Scotia Utilian Review Board. I'm going to continue to my last slide, which is our contact information. This is available on our new website at pvsc.ca as well, or contained on any of the assessment notices that have been mailed out this year. We really encourage property owners to give us a call. If you have things, if there's items on an assessment notice that aren't making sense or just aren't jiving with you for, for any reason, you can always give us a call. We staff our phone system with additional assessors as well as customer service representatives this time of year, especially for this 31-day period where we see a significantly increased call volume. And we have sort of a streaming system on the phone lines so that if you have an administrative inquiry such as changing a mailing address, this type of thing, or just confirming whether we've received documentation such as an appeal, it goes to our customer service representatives. And if your call is value-related, if you want to talk about why your assessment changed or how it's changed and what the reasons are for that, we have assessors available on the phone to discuss those questions with property owners Monday to Friday. And that, that continues throughout the year. However, we have more folks on the phone based on anticipated volume through the 31-day inquiry and appeal period, which again ends Thursday night. So I think I mentioned already, appeals can be emailed. You can also email us an inquiry anytime at pvsc.ca. Our service center office is Arlington Place in Truro for, throughout the province. And we do have a fax number that we're still using as well. So with that, thanks very much for your time. I'm not sure how we are for time. I know you folks have a busy agenda. So again, from my perspective, thank you very much for taking the time to listen to the presentation, and I'll reach out if there's any questions.
Do you have any questions for Rod? I have one quick one, Rod. If someone bought a house in,
Sure.
If someone bought a house in 2021, when would a CAPD be introduced to their house?
So. Easy, easy answer, presuming in this example they meet the other eligibility criteria. It would be this year, 2023. So when a property transacts, if it's what we call sort of a, a market transaction whereby it's not within the family. So, so for instance, if you inherit a property or purchase it, it has, it has no relationship to the amount of money changing hands. But if it's within an immediate family, the previous cap can stay on that property, continue to. And if it's a market transaction, then what happens is the property is not eligible for CAPD in the year, in the calendar year or roll year following the purchase. So a property purchased last year is not eligible for CAPD this year. A property purchased in 2021 would not have been eligible in the 2022 assessment role, but now would be eligible in 2023. So how that cap would be calculated, it would be last year's assessment plus the CPI. And if that number is lower than the assessed value of the property, then a CAPD is going to print on the notice. If the number is higher for some reason, it could be the property is still eligible and may have a CAPD next year. But if the cap is greater than the assessed value, because the CPI has been added to last year's amount. So it's, it's not a typical scenario this year because there's been such significant increases to the assessments. But I just always like to put it out there that it's possible that there's no benefit to the cap. So the chances that you have a benefit to the cap or a cap printing on your notice are greater as time goes on. So you often see a bigger difference over time between assessed value and cap value. Does, does that answer the question?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Just to give you a little bit of perspective as far as CAPD and CPI versus market values. This year, 2023, after significant market value increases, you have 83% of your residential dwellings or properties with residential dwellings on them. 83% are now eligible for CAPD, are on CAPD this year. Before the pandemic started, you had 33% on CAPD. But that's how the, the give and take or the ups and downs of the CPI or the difference between the CPI and the market value affects who is and who isn't eligible for the CAPD.
Excellent. Thank you, Paul. Paul, I want to thank you gentlemen for taking time out of your evening schedule and joining us here. It's been informative, and I want to thank you for your time.
Our pleasure. Anytime. If you have further questions, just funnel them through, Linda, and we'll get an answer back to you as best we can.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for having us. Have a nice evening.
We will. Thank you. Next up. Uh next up, um approval of minutes from the previous uh meeting that took place January ninth. Any errors or omissions? No, but I declare them approved. Uh we'll move on to section five, reports town apartment, public works. Uh Nick is not reporting. He's off sick tonight. His package public works package in the mailbox. So you got something there?
Okay, go ahead, Nick. Thank you, worship. So in his report, I just want to note to the bottom, he noted that there's a special note that two of the main machines for snow removal is becoming very unreliable, causing delays in some of the snow removal process. Um so we're working on getting those fixed up, meeting promptly. Also, we just recently just hired a new operator labor full-time position, so we're now at full staff capacity for our public works team, and we want to welcome Justin Bryan to the team.
Okay, thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
Any questions regarding public works? Well, we'll move on to the next item. Uh municipal political executive leader, are we calling on councillor McNutt for that, please?
I'm just going to give you a breakdown of his report. Uh he's working on a workplace wellness policy for town employees, aimed to reduce stress and create an overall healthier workplace, both mentally and physically. Uh he's been hoping to present that in April, after the new fiscal year. Uh Jimmy had a let Bell Let's Talk Day on January twenty-fifth. Uh they had a walk, and they met at the fire hall for refreshments. Um also promoting our um walking group. Uh they meet every Wednesday at six P M. At the gazebo, everybody's welcome. It's Susan Rector who looks after that. Uh and she's hoping to start some daytime walks in April as well. Uh we had our recreation commission meeting uh on Thursday, January twenty-sixth, and we are starting to plan some activities for the remainder of the winter. We're going to have uh something for Valentine's Day, uh Family Day, February twentieth. And we're also going to uh do a big push for a March we don't have the words yet, March break, winter something or other um to combine the old uh what's it, the fire department staff? A winter carnival to combine the old winter carnival that the fire department will probably not be having um with March break and have a full, we're hoping to get the whole town involved and and have some sort of winter carnival. We're playing with the wording just yet. Um we finally, after um some issues, um we now have the school available uh for an hour and a half on Tuesdays, and we are hoping to uh start basketball um and or pickleball. We'll have to decide that it's happening very soon, so everybody stay tuned to the recreation commission site, and we'll be promoting that. Um also, free fitness classes are going to be uh offered at the fire hall very soon, so again, um keep watching that. Uh and if anybody's interested in volunteering, by all means, contact Jimmy. Uh and our next recreation commission meeting is this Thursday night at six thirty at Town Hall in the front um the front of Town Hall.
Everyone is welcome.
Everyone is welcome. Currently, we've had, the first meeting had seventeen people, the second meeting we had ten. Ten was very nice. Seventeen was a little bit full over in Jimmy's little office there. Um so we have ten, and I think we have a really great group, and we're really excited about what we have going on for February and March.
Excellent. Anyone have any questions for councillor McNutt?
The Tuesday night, is that for what grades, like your age? Is it?
Adult, so it'll be adult, yeah. Um remember last year Connor Patrickin did the adult, like pickup basketball? So Connor really wants to get back in there with that group, but we also really wanted to pick up ball, so we're going to try and figure out how we can do split the gym or do forty-five minutes for one, forty-five for another or something. Um anyway, we're kind of planned by year, but uh it took us a while to get into the school, so we finally got access and uh, yeah, we're going around with it.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, councillor McNutt. Next, administration department report. Linda Clooney presented.
Thank you, worship. So the report is in the package, so I'll just mention a few of the highlights. Um we're working, the public works department and the admin is working on some of the approval compliances. Uh we're setting up some schedules and organizing steps to steps, um in case somebody was absent, someone else could just jump in and and continue on. So there's no missing of any uh approval compliance. Uh there's been a big push on our meter readings and water billings. A lot of work has been done here admin-wise to make things, the process more efficient. Uh again, more worksheets have been built and monitoring and continuing on working with the communication with the public works with new meters and as reads are coming in, so that's building really well. Uh our collections, we prepared uh two notices for arrears, and they're headed for collections. Um our tax process is moving smoothly. Uh we just went through the legal process and and now we're just moving into the next phases, so we're still going through that. And there's still a high demand for tax certificates weekly. Um we're receiving like up to five to six a week, so tax certificates are still moving, house sales are still moving, so it's uh it's moving, uh keeps the admin moving.
Going down.
Yes.
Okay, anyone have any questions for the, go ahead, councillor?
Do we have any idea where we have to get water meters?
Uh it's still backwater. Yes, and we've gone through a couple of companies with that, so uh right now we're looking at May and receiving new ones. Yeah, so when new ones going on, they're going in and on flat for now. But as um as new meters come in, we're uh replacing those that are broken. We have quite a huge broken list. I'm replacing those ones first, and then we'll be putting those on the other homes that are on flat. And we can show to any other municipalities to see if they have. We have. And they do not. No, no, yeah, they're holding on to theirs.
They're on the same boat.
They're same boat.
It's going to keep one person pretty busy for a while. Once you get, once you do get yours.
Oh, yes.
You're probably living three or four weeks before you're going to get used to try to catch up.
It's going to be quite a, quite a haul. Yes, there's quite a demand for it.
Okay, any other questions for Linda regarding administration? Uh then could we have a motion to accept the report between the fire department report?
So.
Second by councillor Coburn, second or? Steppe, oh, second by councillor Black, always in favor. Uh motion carried. Okay, we will move on to reports of committees in board, interim municipal property reduction. Uh there's minutes in the package. Carolyn, do you have anything to add to that?
No, we have a meeting next week, so I'll have something after that.
Okay. Uh anyone have any questions for councillor Black regarding that? Then we'll move on to solid waste management. I see councillor McNutt's name is scrolling in here.
Uh we had our meeting last week, too. Um lots of conversation, but the most important thing that's probably going to affect us is this new C and D regulation changes. Um what I understand is coming down from the problems from the environment, right? Right. So they created these new C and D regulations, but they're a little bit obscure, and we're not quite sure what they want and how we're going to do it. And anyway, so um it's this year, Dawn McQueen reported that they are finalizing the review of the comments and editing the guidelines. They are hoping to be able to distribute the updated guidelines by late February. Um they're very, very late in doing it. What they are saying, though, is they're going to give us a year to slowly
Transition.
Phase in, phase in all of the new guidelines, so. And that's it for, that's the major.
Anyone have any questions for councillor McNutt regarding that? Oh, okay, then we'll move on to All Saints Community Healthcare Foundation, and I have Linda's name beside that.
Thank you, worship. So this committee, we're still looking for a community member, if anyone's interested. Um your violence would be taken care of by the town to attend these meetings. These meetings uh right now are once every two months. So uh in the package I have uh captured, just so everyone can see what goes on at these meetings, um the October approved minutes, uh this was approved at our last meeting in December. And as you note, uh they had approved uh there was a request for biretic bed and CD mobility ads and rehab tools, totally thirty-one thousand, so that committee had approved that uh expense. Um and also, uh there was a need for two new blood pressure machines uh for the clinic, and uh and they worked out to eight thousand dollars, and again, those were approved by that committee as well. So a fair bit of business on what the needs of our hospital needs there, and uh so just just to show a bit of highlight some of the things that they do at the board level, so. But if there's any interest out there, we do need a committee member from Oxford uh to sit on this committee.
Hey, thank you, Linda. Next up, police services review, and that's got my name on it. We met last week. Um we've asked the Department of Justice for what is called a G D P R N, which is a general duty policy resourcing model. That is what they use to determine what we pay for policing by the RCMP. And the one they're using now is three or four years old, and is not really current to what we're using that meeting now for placing. Um that is about all we have to report. Uh so there will be a formal request or council has to request this formally in front of the Department of Justice. So at the next town council meeting on February the
First.
Twenty-first, that'll be going forth from that. That's all we really have right now. Uh any questions from anybody regarding that? No, okay. Police advisory board, uh package is there. You have anything to add to that, councillor Coburn?
No, not this time.
Okay, not this time. Uh RCMP report, October, that is October and December, that's in the package. Those of you at home can access that by going to the Town Oxford website, and those documents will be there. Uh six point seven, accessibility committee. Uh the December minutes are in the package. I'll call on Linda to add anything she would like to.
Uh I just would like to add, at our last meeting, a lot of uh hard work went to it. Uh we're actually giving some content, some heavy content into the plan, and uh we're looking to get that plan approved sometime this year. Uh right now, we're looking at uh some pictures of accessibility uh within our town as well as uh some more content that I'm digging as well. So but it's a very active group, and we're very proud of them, and and uh yeah, so we're looking to see what kind of plan, and this plan's going to be a living plan, so we can edit and move on as as our town grows.
Excellent. Anyone have any questions for Linda regarding that? No, we'll move on. Audit committee, December minutes are in the package. Councillor Jones or McNutt, do you have anything to add to the audit committee?
Well, uh the audit committee met uh February first and received the presentation of the town's financials. The town auditors, we made the following motion to to recommend to council tonight, and they're going to give a presentation. I don't need to make that motion until afterwards.
After that special meeting.
Okay, anyone have any questions for councillor Bill on that? That concludes everything on that for our town meeting, or meeting in the whole. Uh I am going to move for German. We're going to take about a three or four minute break, then we'll be back to do the town council meeting regarding the budget and possible approval of the uh audit financial statements. So we'll be back in about three or four minutes. So we'll be back in about three or four minutes. We're going live now, folks? Okay. My mistake.
I was just gonna interview you fellows.
Okay. Welcome to the Oxford Town Council Special Meeting for February the 6th, 2023. I'd like to call this meeting to order. First off, I need a motion of approval for the agenda. Moved in second, if all was in favor, please say aye. Motion carried. Okay, we're here tonight to have a presentation of the draft financials from Baker Chili, representing Baker Chili. Our Aida Mitchell, partner audit and assurance. And Ben Nate, your manager and shorts and advisory services. I'll turn the floor over to you people.
Thank you so much for having us tonight. It's really nice to see you all first, and I'd say it's the same, you also.
You are a little bit tall.
A little bit taller than anticipated. So Ben and I are just kinda walking through the financial statements tonight. We went through our other presentation last week and I think once is enough. If there's something in there you'd like me to repeat. I'm gonna go through the consolidated statements because that's what we actually are providing an opinion on. The standalone financial statements are prepared by management and other than making sure that they actually balance, there's not much we do on it. But we will flip through those and if you have specific questions, we'll answer those. Also, just reminding you that our work is done at the $100,000 level and those may have $2,000 numbers and that we cannot answer questions about, so just pre-ambulating that. Okay, so just as a reminder, last week when we went through the statements, I did mention that they are still in draft and they will be in draft until the council actually approves them. At that point, we will send management and management representation a letter that will require them to sign as well as the subsequent events review, just ensuring that this... It's just the wind, just the wind, sorry. Just ensuring that there's nothing that has happened from our field work in date to today or tomorrow's day that should be reflected in these financial statements. I don't believe there is anything, but we never know. So once that is done, we will actually be able to issue these financial statements finally. So if we turn to the first report, it says management report. As discussed last week, that just shows what management's responsibilities to these financial statements are. The next one is the independent auditor's report and actually of the financial statements, those are the only things that I am responsible for as an auditor. So this is my opinion on the financial statements. The rest of the statements are management's responsibilities to ensure that they are actually prepared and informed to a piece as the public sector accounting standards. We will be issuing a clean or un-audited financial statement, sorry, un-audited opinion on these financial statements, which means that there's nothing in these financial statements that indicate that they are not a fair presentation of the financial position and operating results of the town as at March 31st, when we bring it to you. Any questions on our opinion? No? Onto page five, which is the statement of financial position. So when you look at a statement of financial position, certain things that you should keep in mind, it's a point in time, so it is as at a specific date, which means that on April 1st, these numbers may not be the same as what we're looking at today, they will always change. I will just walk you through some of the highlights here and if you have any questions, feel free to stop me. So the first thing we'll look at is your financial assets. So you'll see that your cash have increased significantly, but as we did last week, I will walk you through the cash flow statement that will give you a better idea of why those changes happened. The next one there is your receivables. You will see that your receivables increased from $234,000 in the prior year to $371,000 in the current year. And most of that is just timing differences, so when things happen, when amounts are receivable. But also over and above that, there is an additional 41,000 there from the AIM fund that was in there last year, so it doesn't trust me up every time. On your financial liabilities, your council's payable increased by approximately $20,000. Once again, it's just timing of when invoices are received and when actual payments are made. The third revenue, you will see decrease from $249,000 to $187,000. And that change is due to two things that happened. Last year, you actually received COVID restart funding and that was used mostly throughout the year. And then the rich decreased and at the same time, you actually received funding for your rena revitalization project and most of that amount hasn't been spent yet, so it's just a deferred revenue amount that's gonna sit there until next year, which will actually border into revenue when you incur the expenses related to that. On the long-term debt, that was just normal repayment of capital outstanding of your bonds, the ventures that you have. And then on your non-financial assets, you will see that your inventory stayed consistent. Your tangible capital assets, even though it decreased, that decrease is a result of two things happening. First of all, you've had additions of about 244,000 dollars and then it was offset by amortization of $394,000. Now, amortization is just an amount that we pretend amount that we calculate to actually show the use of assets over time, to show what would have cost to use that asset during that time. And then prepaid stayed the same. So to show you at the end of the year that you had an accumulated surplus in the town of about $8.7 million. Any questions on the statement of operation, oh, sorry, financial position?
Not sure.
Not you? Okay, perfect. Now, the next one is on page six, which is your consolidated statement of operations on accumulated surplus. Now, this statement shows you the actual day-to-day transactions and revenues expenses that the town had for the year. So as you can see, your revenue is about a third down the page, that your revenues increased about $630,000 both over budget and the prior year. And most of that changes happened because of three major events. The first one is detransfer taxes. We, Ben and I, were just chatting about it again. It sounded there were a record number of property sales in Oxford last year, which actually directly contributed to that increase. The next thing that happened? 60,000, yeah.
More above than what we anticipated.
Is your equalization payments that you received doubled. So that was about $180,000 and your gas tax also doubled, which was about $80,000, I believe. And then there's another thing that happened, which was the COVID funding that you received last year, that you actually incurred those expenses from for this year. But basically, that's an in and out, it doesn't transfer to the bottom line. It's just a paper transaction, there was no additional cash came into the town this year as a result of that. Now, on the flip side, your expenses, you will see that your expenses was about $76,000 more than last year, but there was about $307,000 more that you incurred than what you budgeted for this year. And the main reason for that, there's both increases and decreases. So the significant decrease is your government, your general government services. That decreased from $454,000 to $335,000 in the current year, it was also close to budget. Most of that related to the former CAO's salary that was still in last year that was not budgeted for or incurred in the year. The next one is your protective services. And most of that decrease, so a decrease from $721,000 to $666,000. And compared to a budget of $807,000 had related to the fire, the fire communication system that was put in place last year, as well as there were some fire trucks that needed to repair some maintenance last year that did not reoccur this year, which brought down your overall cost over there for services. Your transportation services, on the other hand, was higher than both prior year and budget, so you had $495,000 last year, about a budget of $370,000 and the actual expense was $598,000. Most of that related to the general expenses that you had to incur and salt and fuel. So these lead salt was a lot more expensive in the current year than the prior year. And then the last one to show there is just the recreation and cultural services. That was much higher than the prior year as well as budget, so $120,000 compared to $234,000. And all of that related to the fact that you actually took over the management of your Rink facility in 2022 versus it was not managed by you in the prior year. So all of that actually translated to an annual surplus for the year of $716,000 compared to a surplus of $165,000 compared to a budget of $400,000. Any questions on the statement of operations?
Just one, because I'm a little... What is meant by accumulated surplus at the end of the year? What would that include, the accumulated surplus?
So that is all the funding you received that you haven't spent yet.
Okay.
And our understanding is that it actually has to be transferred over to reserves. And we'll need the council to approve that, so we can actually make that in the standalone financial statements. It's not gonna change anything in here.
But it says 8 million, that's what's wrong with that.
But that's over time. Every single year.
Oh, I see, okay, so okay, that's a running toward that.
That's a running.
Okay. Okay, now I understand it, that makes sense now.
I'm excited there for a minute.
I know.
On the individual funds that you have, so your general fund, capital fund, reserve funds, it will look vastly different, because that service will be spread, in most of it should be in your reserve funds, not in the operating funds. Any other questions on that statement?
So we don't have any?
The recreation and cultural services expenditures at $234,000, that would have also included the COVID restart money that went into the bank. So it was an in and out, so that's one of the numbers.
No questions yet, carry on?
Fantastic, I like that. The next one on page seven is the consolidated statement of changes in net debt. So basically, all this does is it reconciles your annual surplus or deficit down to a change in debt for the year and just shows you all the incidentals that made that change. Any questions on that statement? The next one is everyone's favorite, which is the statement of cash flows. And usually it confuses everyone, but... Basically, a statement of cash flows. These financial statements are prepared on a cool basis, so we accrue for things where we know cash has gone. The cash flow statement takes that cool basis out of the equation and shows you the true cash effect of what happened year in the year in your financial statement. So if you think about it on that basis, it's just the cash that happened. So it shows you your operations, your financing, capital investing activities of the year and it will actually reconcile your net surplus for the year to your cash funds.
Good.
So you can see that this year, from operations, you were able to generate 200 and, oh, sorry, $922,000 compared to just over a million dollars in the prior year. While in financing, you actually used $366,000 of cash, but you were able to generate almost $300,000 in cash the previous year. And most of that change comes from your payment of long-term debt in the current year, while you didn't take on any additional. And then in capital assets, you will see that you spent about $236,000 acquiring capital assets this year. And you also sold some, a small amount, which generated just over $7,000 in cash. And then lastly, in your investing activities, you were able to generate $48,000, sorry, use $48,000 of additional cash in the current year. So all of that give you a change or an increase in cash funds of $271,000 for the year. At the $856,000 that was there at the beginning of the year, leaves you with a cash funds at the end of the year of $1.1 million. Questions on that?
Sure.
Sure, fantastic.
So I just wanna remind anybody watching, this is for March of '22.
Yeah.
So we're not talking the last calendar year, we're talking the year before, so if people don't think we're... Just to be clear.
And then the last statement there is the statement of capital project funding and it just shows you which capital projects were actually funded during the year. And you will see that there were two major items. The first one was the Atlantic Infrastructure Management Labor, which is about $48,000. And then there was paving that was done of about $134,000 for the year. The next few pages are the next of the financial statements. Would you like me to walk you through that, since there were no significant changes from the previous year? Okay.
I don't think so, right? I mean, we got it, they heard all of this last week, so yeah.
Perfect. Yeah, so with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Ben and he'll just flip through the standalone financial statements now. And if there's any questions, just stop us. So he'll just walk you through what the statements are and what we're looking at.
So is there a particular where the guys would like that?
Why don't we start with the general operating fund? And then we can do the capital fund, and then we can do the special reserve fund, and then we can look at the little...
So which one are we starting with?
The general.
Go ahead, okay. These are probably the longest ones to go through, the other ones are significant. Ben, I'm gonna actually speak this a little louder, so that I can take the opportunity.
Sure, okay. So I guess the first thing we probably wanted to draw your attention, this has been mentioned with through Stan already, but these are, as opposed to the, I guess the reason why we go through the consolidated in more detail is because those are audited, where these are un-audited or prepared by management. We don't take, I guess, not as much detail for us to go into on these non-consolidated ones, where we haven't prepared the work ourselves, but we have basically qualities and we'll discuss them. So you can see there's not the same independent auditive report. We have the advisory readers on the first page here, just basically saying these financial statements have not been audited by any external party, so I guess just bear that in mind when we go through them. So in terms of, in terms of the statement of financial position, it does kind of break out the receivables in a little bit more detail in terms of specifically the taxes and sewer rates, which would be relevant for the general operating fund. And then one of the differences you'll note, both on the financial assets and the financial liability side is where in the consolidated statements, we basically have to net the due to and due from to nil. You will see these individual fund statements that are balances owing between the funds. You'll see like, for example, the own funds on the financial asset side of 64K to the general capital, 179K to the water operating and 11K to the special reserve gas tax. So that is one of the differences from the consolidated financial statements. You will see the individual fund balances and I think on the income statement as well, you'll see the transfers to own funds. So that is kind of like a level of detail in these statements you'll see that you won't necessarily see on the consolidated ones, where basically our goal as the auditors is to ensure that those net to zero during the year. Are there like any specific questions on the balance sheet for the general operating fund, besides just kind of the way things are broken up a bit separately? So anyone to add?
No, it's just a little bit more detail. You will see that most of the trade payables comes from here, there's not a big difference between this and the consolidated statements. As well as receivables as well.
And that accumulated surplus is just for about one year.
Yeah.
That's the 390,000.
So that's last year's surplus, you're how I interpret that?
Yeah.
And 50 of that, 50 of that is what we promised to put in the reserve of the budget. And there's 180 that we, the extra equalization payment, there's another 60,000 we didn't predict that came from the transfer tax. So all in all, we had more revenue than what we anticipated we were going to have at the first of the year.
Sure. Let's do it then.
So we're not going to get those same equalization payments.
Okay, and then moving on to the statement of financial activities. You'll basically see the exact same statement as the statement of operations for the consolidated, basically with the exception of the water rates being a little from revenues and also on the expenditure side. And you'll also see that the CGSMA revenues and expenses are not in the statement because those are at the consolidated level, basically like we, you record those directly and then basically as a, those would be basically like at the consolidated level, so they wouldn't be in this individual, individual fund. So again, we just have that transfer to own funds line as well included in this statement that you wouldn't have seen in the consolidated.
So if you decide to transfer the surplus, that amount will increase to the full amount that was transferred to the reserve fund at the end of the year?
I'm sorry, you're blocking.
There's a requirement to transfer your surplus.
Right.
To reserve fund.
Correct.
So if you make that motion to transfer it, that $219,000 transfer to own funds will go up to over $600,000, because you're gonna transfer another $390,000 from there.
Right, okay.
Should we be looking at doing that tonight?
Yes, to do this transfer.
So if you do the transfer and you do a retroactive approval to make that it was required to be transferred, then we can reflect it in these financial statements before we issue that.
Do that tonight. And is Ruth Ann okay? That's what you're supposed to do with surplus. Actual money transfer, because we'll probably end up keeping it in due to some of it because cash flow problems in the end of March will happen, because we won't have that, we don't have that cash in the actual bank account, right? Remember, this was stuff done over time, so you know, we don't want to leave ourselves in a bad cash flow situation either, so theoretically, that's what's supposed to be in there and...
And we, no worries to make that motion to transfer those funds?
But they don't...
It won't reflect in there.
It won't reflect in this.
Because this is last year's extra money, not this year's extra money, yeah.
So you need a motion to transfer.
Yeah. To which reserve is it, just to just be operating? Operating reserve? Operating reserve in the... It's in frame, that's what you're supposed to do with any surplus that you have, right?
Right.
Yeah.
If we need some cash for cash flow, can we take it out of that reserve for short term? So if we find we're short, if we follow the regulations properly, we should vote it over to reserve, then if you come to us in three weeks' time and say, we're gonna run out of cash, we can either borrow, we take it, borrow it to the reserve and pay it back once the money starts rolling.
Or on paper, just do the financial report on paper like it's in there.
Yep.
Have it in a due to, and you actually have taken the money and put it into the camp because... Have it in the due to, and you actually haven't taken the money and put into the camp, because number one, we don't have that money.
Right.
That actual cash is not there, so you can't move it when you don't have it, and we won't be getting any more influx, big influx of money until the tax bills come into, into.
Right. So are we allowed to do that?
Yeah.
No.
I think, yeah.
Is that, is that? I guess, is that the true requirement?
That's technically a paper transfer.
Well, it basically says that those due-to and due-from should be settled, or your budget should reflect that it's settled through just your normal operations. So you should basically budget as if you are gonna repay it.
Yeah.
So tonight we'll need a motion to transfer the accumulated surplus for the twenty-one, twenty-two year of three hundred and ninety thousand, six hundred and sixty-five into our operating reserve.
Correct.
How much?
Three hundred and ninety thousand, six hundred and sixty-five.
Three hundred and sixty-five.
That number is off.
Okay.
As we go back.
Okay. What's next?
Uh, so we do have the, uh, statement of financial activities broken out on a more detailed basis on the expenditures and the revenues. You can see, like, taxes is more broken out, as well as the lots of grants and those taxes. I'm not sure if we want to go to that level of detail, I, I think probably we're preference to be able to note that then.
Maybe if you do, the council just wants to scan for the, is there any specific questions on any of those, and then you can answer it?
We're still looking at the general operating fund?
Yes. So we are on page four and five and six of that now. That just provides further details and breakdowns of everything that's, uh, disclosed on page three. So it's just a lot of granular information.
Yep.
What's included on each line item there?
This is what we're used to seeing, this is what Ruth Dan provides for us.
I'm a regular.
Routinely. Actually, we had a great year last year. A little bigger tax, the transfer tax there on the first page, there on page four, seventy-eight thousand versus three thousand seven thousand. And we really couldn't have predicted that in the bank.
He knows.
Well, I mean, Kathy doing all those statistics every week, like, yeah, that'd be five or six. One time with, on yours to sell, that was very.
Yeah, not even one percent. So we actually got seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars in the transfer cost.
Yeah.
Yeah. Something like that? Okay, um, so no one seems to have any questions for the general or general operating fund? Everybody here with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Next, general capital fund.
Okay. This one's a little bit shorter than the, the other, the one just like that. Um, the reason being really is that ultimately, um, the revenues are within the, the operating funds, obviously, and the, the capital funds are really mostly just used, um, basically to, to hold the financial assets by and large, or in some of the, the capital assets, I should say. So you'll really see in here, basically, the, as well as the long-term debts, basically, it's the, it's the debt and the capital assets that are held in these capital funds, and then you won't see any revenues in here, so you'll, you'll see the, the own funds, the, the due-tos and due-froms that are within the, the, the other entities, and you'll see the capital lease and the other long-term debt. And then we do have a quick, um, statement of investment in, in capital assets here, where we basically reconcile, um, the capital assets, uh, at the beginning of the year, on a net book value basis, I believe, um, to the net book value at year-end. We basically look at the gain on the sale, um, return debt retired, and the transfer at less de-aptization. So, sorry, I guess this would be the, the total non-financial, uh.
Yep.
It's the tot, the, the capital assets less.
The total amount of this in the last.
Yeah. Um, any questions on, on these?
Thank, anyone have questions regarding the water utility?
This is the general capital fund, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's no bail we can.
Uh, that's why they need to talk to them.
Who was, yes, I did.
They were just deeper.
Hmm? Yeah. Oh, oh, that is better.
Uh, the thing that you should notice is that of your total accumulated surplus, in the consolidated cer, statements, about four point three million dollars of that is just what's your net invested in capital assets at the end of the day. So we can see to eight million dollars, more than half of that is just infrastructure and town.
Right.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
That's good.
Yeah, yeah.
So moving to the water utility operating fund, so the special reserve, okay?
Yeah.
Special reserve.
Okay. So I guess the, the difference with the special reserve fund is you will see three separate columns for everyone in here, um, for the separate reserves, one for the operating reserve, one for the gas tax, and one for the capital. Uh, you can see we have basically in here cash, as well as the due-to and due-from balances that are included in the special reserves fund. And then in terms of, uh, statement of financial activities, um, essentially, it's, it's the gas taxes, gas tax fund received, and again, you can see, as we discussed already, that the increase from eighty-eight K in the prior, or eighty-nine K in the prior year to one hundred eighty-one thousand in the current year is due to that extra gas tax bill being received. And then there, there is a little bit of interest in here, as well as bank charges, but by and large, um, the financial activities are the gas taxes received, less the transfers to, uh, the general capital in the current year and the general operating prior year. And also just be impacted by, um, the, the transfer that happens as well.
We're gonna have to break it down between gas tax and operating, though, because there is still some gas tax.
So, yeah, yeah.
So we just have to make sure that we do that for the financial statements or thing.
Okay. Water utility operating fund next?
Sure.
So I guess, obviously, the majority of the, the financial activities are, are in the, uh, there's, there's more activity occurring in the general utility operating fund, but it is the same type of things you'd be seeing in here, where you would be seeing more income statement activity, um, on the, on the water utility operating fund. So just starting, but starting with the balance sheet, you can see that there's, um, cash standing in here, there's receivables, which should be specific to the, there are receivables outstanding on the water rates, basically collected from, um, town, uh, water, or I guess water bill payers, for lack of a better term. Um, and then you will see the, the own funds in here as well, as we've seen in the other, uh, funds, and just a small payables balance. And the inventory is included within the water utility operating fund, as we discussed previously, there is no change in the balance year-over-year. And then we do have the venture discount included in here as well, to be, um, that would then, I suppose.
That's purely just accounting entries?
Yeah.
So when you take out the venture, sometimes it's a higher rate of interest rate, or a pay a premium or a discount? Uh, rules just say you have to take that in over time, and that's all that that relates to. So it will just be drawn down every year based on what, what cal, the calculations we make?
Okay.
Okay, so it's nothing real money.
Okay, but it's not real money.
It's just accounting. So there's no motion here, though, that accumulated surplus at the end of the year, that we could do in here?
It just says operating surplus is.
Okay, just operating.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Okay. Moving on to the statement of financial activities, um, so there was basically one line in the consolidated statements for, for both the water, the entirety of the, uh, water utility operating fund, or there's a water rates line on the, on the income statements, and also an expenses line, and this kind of breaks it out a little bit further in terms of, you see it mostly comes from meter sales and public fire protection, and then you can also see the expenses, which are mostly, um, power pumping, uh, depreciation from the, um, water utility capital fund, which would be, like, the expense would be recorded in the water utility operating fund.
Hmm.
And then you'll also see, um, in the non-operating expenditures, this wouldn't have been, um, you would not, not have seen this in the consolidated statements, because on a consolidated level, the debt payments would have been recorded as a decrease in the debt, as opposed to in this, in this fund, on the standalone payment, or the standalone statements were recording these as an expense, basically, which I believe is how you do it in your budget as well, where it's recorded as an expense for, basically, our accounting purposes on the consolidated level, where basically we do a reclass entry to basically record it as a reduction of debt rather than an expense, so you will see it as an expense in this fund. So you can see about ninety-eight K in principal payments and a hundred, or, or twenty-one K in interest payments, which shows not operating expenditures in here. Uh, were there any questions on this statement of financial activities?
No. Try it. You're doing a good job, thank.
Huh?
You're doing a great job.
Okay, and then we just have the water utility capital fund as well.
Sure.
So similar to the general operating capital fund, we would not see, uh, much in here in terms of, um, operating activities, would mostly be balance sheet with the tangible capital assets and long-term debts. And we also have the deferred contributions included in here as well. Any, any questions on this?
Oh, why would cash, I, I have one question, just why would cash be so much higher start of twenty-twenty-two than twenty-twenty-one?
It's end, not start.
Oh, okay, pardon me. Why would we be? That's on the water utility capital fund, it just. It was, you know, a hundred and seventy-two thousand more than it was before. Is that a question for Ruth Dan?
Well, I'm wondering if our due-to, um, general fund might be emptied out at the end of the year, maybe?
It's possible, yeah.
Yes. A lot of that might have been due to general, we only paid the, the general operating, so we use that due-to and due-from a lot.
Right.
Due-to old funds.
Yeah. Yeah, you read there was other two from twenty-twenty-one, they adopted what's saying.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
Given a may on the water revenue, is, we got an extra sixty-seven thousand dollars for twenty-twenty-one. Is that due to increase in water rates?
Oh, I, didn't we increase the rate to Oxford Foods improved their, put in a, an upgraded meter that was giving an actual Canada consumption?
They had a big consumption in the spring, or in the fall of that year. They, well, Oxford Foods had big consumption.
Yes.
In the fall, non-mutual.
But we put a new meter in there, I think.
Flow.
Yes, and what was the, the meter that was in there, or the, they figured it was really.
Major property.
Yes, and we put a new meter in there, I think that's what the difference is.
Land rent sales, they've gone up, not by much, like, three hundred dollars, but lucky because.
Because no meters.
Meters.
Yeah. Flashes, but you'd probably see more in the next year.
Yeah, we do, I guess we will. In our meters that are broken.
Broken, uh, new housing schemes. And that was the one time of, of they ran a lot more carrots that one year than they did.
Yeah. That's right, but they ran right into December last year.
Yeah.
So, December. Okay.
Okay, so we have, and then in the back here, we have three, um, separate statements, uh, the statement of investment in capital assets, which would be, um, similar to the one we've seen in the general, uh, capital fund, where it's, we're basically reconciling the net, um, non-financial assets, um, basically from the beginning of the year to the end of the year, where we're basically seeing the term debt retired, um, as well as the service charges and the interest revenue.
Yeah.
Uh, and then a statement of deferred contributions, where basically we're just showing here that the, the change in the balance of the statement of deferred contributions year-over-year, which is, is pretty small, it's just doing the annual amortization, and as you can kind of see, these have a, it has a pretty big, uh, entanglement period, so it'll come off each year. And then the final, um, the final, uh, statement here is the statement of continuity of depreciation funds, where we're basically reconciling, um, from the beginning of the prior year to the closing, um, the cash, as well as the due-tos and due-froms, we're basically looking at the ins and notes, such as depreciation and purchase of capital, capital assets, and then you can also see there's a small, um, bit of interest in there, as well as, uh, the acquisition of the long-term debt, which is obviously, as we saw on the balance sheet of the consolidated fund, there was, and as well as the cash flow statement, there's far less, uh, there's a bit, pretty big acquisition of long-term debt in the prior year, and there was not as much in the current year.
Right.
So that's all we have for the general standard statements.
Anyone have any questions?
Before I thought for a minute that we were rich.
Yeah.
Only on paper.
Only on paper.
Good stuff.
So there's no questions, I'd like to make a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two, John, consolidated financial statements and the audited consolidated financial statements as presented by Bader Hill and Tom Souchi Corbin.
Second, this move by Councilor Jones, second by Deputy Mayor Donald. While your motion, all those in favor, if you raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
Can I also make a motion to transfer the twenty-one, twenty-two year, uh, surplus of three hundred and ninety thousand, six hundred and sixty-five to operating reserve fund?
In the segment. Segment by, move by Councilor Jones, second by, uh, Councilor Colmer. All those in favor, if you say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Anything else? Is that it? I call this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, people, uh, I understood some of.